All those meetings of order of the Ellisville Town Council, Monday, March 24th, 2025. Jimmy, would you like to lead it?
I have to follow once again before we end this evening. Thank you so much for still telling us, sir. We thank you for our employees, we thank you for our town board, and thank you for those that lead us. We thank you for all the things you've supplied for us. Question continues to lead us and guide us to make the lead team. That's his name, he's saying, amen.
And Pam, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, Rocco.
Scott Wodham, Pamela Samuels.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Dan Swaffer.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve minutes for the regular meeting, March 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. All right, I'd entertain a motion to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any council comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. All right, moving along, resolution to approve Hoosier Start 457 Plan and Matching Plan as additional plan to the Nationwide Retirement Plan.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Patrick Ballard. He's from Nationwide and he will be explaining this and giving a presentation and answering any questions that the council may have for this.
Do you want me to come up here?
Yes, please.
Thanks for letting me come on, I appreciate it. My name is Patrick Ballard, I'm out of Seymour, Indiana. I work for Nationwide Retirement Solutions, I'm a senior retirement specialist. I mostly represent the state of Indiana's retirement plan, which is called the Hoosier Start Plan, the save today and retire tomorrow. This is a plan that is administered by the state comptroller of Indiana. It's a multi-billion dollar plan with over 70,000 participants. We have a small retirement plan with the town of Ellisville. But before I get into that and contrasting it with Hoosier Start, I just want to define what my role is within Nationwide. I am a salaried Nationwide employee. I do not sell any products, I am not incented to do anything other than lead with educational and consulting. So my job mostly is to work with state participants on educating them, walking them through their retirement planning journey, and trying to help them achieve a dignified retirement down the road. I often work hand in hand with my INPERs colleagues and PERF and so forth, and I'm going to talk about how this is going to be potentially complimentary. First of all, Nationwide, we currently have a retirement plan with Ellisville. There's little participation in it, very little assets in it. It's what we call a legacy plan with us, one that was established many years ago. And we really haven't talked to you all about updating the plan. And that's really what our goal is in promoting Hoosier Start out there. Not trying to compete with ourselves, but we want to be able to come to the table and tell plan sponsors that, look, we've got a new plan here within the Hoosier Start that we can offer, that would give you the economies of scale of having, being under the umbrella of the state's plan, whereas they are the fiduciary and they are, cover all the administrative duties of the 457 retirement plan. I know that part of this conversation needs to be fees, and I'm aware of that, and I'm going to get to that in just a moment. But again, I wanted to highlight to you that my job is mostly educational in trying to engage participants regarding their retirement. I try to educate them, sit down with them, do one-on-one meetings, I do group meetings and so forth. But again, that's what my role is with Nationwide and as a representative of the state comptroller's office. That's who administers this. So that is my role. My goal here is basically educational. I talked to Noel about the plan, I don't know, a month or so ago. And again, we have a little participation with this town of Ellisville, so I sort of threw it out there of, look, we've got a really good plan available, you guys might want to take a look at this, because there's no cost at all to the town of Ellisville whatsoever to have this retirement plan. All we're proposing to do is to add an additional option for employees and give them a much better, better option in my opinion, or at least another option with regard to retirement plans. It can run in conjunction with the one that you already have, or we can map over the ones that are existing within the plan and move them over to Hoosier Start. It would be up to the participants with the result coming from one-on-one meetings with the current participants in the plan. But when we look at the Hoosier Start Plan, it is really the third bucket of a retirement savings for employees. You look at the PERF plan, which is that 3% mandatory after-tax contribution, then you look at the pension, the defined benefit, which is an 11.2% contribution. Those are generally either mostly paid by the employer, so really the only thing that employees fund through their employer and a government entity would be a 457 deferred compensation plan. So if someone is an employee of the town and they don't work here for 10 years, they get no benefit from being in the pension plan. So if somebody worked here for eight years and left and they didn't fund anything in their retirement, they're walking away from here with nothing to show for their time in. So what we'd like to offer to the employees is, hey, here's a good retirement option to supplement what you already have. So we're not proposing changing what you have, we're just proposing to add the Hoosier Start platform to you as a plan sponsor. And we would like, if you were to do that, we would like the buy-in of the town to promote this, because the importance of retirement savings is only becoming more and more topical, if you will. It's becoming a more serious talking point about people not saving enough for their own retirement and planning properly and so forth. And that's where we try to come in. So the Hoosier Start Plan, well first of all, let me talk about the current plan here right now. Your current plan has an investment lineup. It's all of these mutual funds that are on this list. And every mutual fund under the sun, every mutual fund under the sun out there has what's called an expense ratio. Those are the internal costs of a mutual fund. So if a mutual fund has an expense ratio of one, that's going to come out of the earnings of the fund, okay? So this, this plan has all these funds with expense ratios that are all over the board, anywhere from, you know, 1.31 to .049. But on top of those, and this is what employees never see in retirement plans, on top of the expense ratios within these mutual funds, if you looked at the statement on Ellisville's plan with Nationwide and you flip over the page, you're going to see fee disclosures. And there's three fee disclosures, a star, a pound, and a plus. The star denotes a fee of .95%, the other is .8%, and the other is .7%. So as a very brief example of fees within Hoosier Start Plan, if we took somebody with a $30,000 account and they invested in an S&amp;P index fund in the current plan, somebody with a $30,000 balance would pay about $438 in fees. In the Hoosier Start Plan, if somebody did the exact same thing, they would pay $57 in fees. A $50,000 account, it'd be $730 versus $59. So Hoosier Start does not have those built-in fees that a group annuity contract has, whereas the employee never sees that additional fee unless they really dug into the footnotes and no one does. So with Hoosier Start, the fee is $54 a year, no fee for the first six months, and the costs of the funds themselves. And the average expense ratio of all of the funds combined is 0.44%. An S&amp;P index fund within Hoosier Start has an internal expense ratio of 0.01%. The current plan right now has two S&amp;P index funds. Those fees are .51 and .44, and on one of those you add in the .95, and the other you add in .85. So you're talking about somebody paying in excess of 1.5% up on fees in a retirement plan. So, so I would propose that you look at just adding that to your current lineup and giving that as an option to your, to your employees to help them supplement what they already have and bring to the table a really rock-solid plan to them, whereas they would be able to do rollovers into the plan. I would suggest that we also add the Roth option to the plan, which to especially the younger people, police and firefighters, they are all looking for ways to be able to do after-tax contributions. And with Hoosier Start, those are Roth contributions, meaning that they're tax-free growth in those. So that's a really good option, especially to certain classes of employees and the younger, because it gives them the ability to grow money on a tax-free basis. So we'd like to add the Roth to that as well. So again, I would, I would say that with, with, with the laws constantly changing, with regulations changing, with Secure Act 2.0 on the horizon and hitting us now with regulations with regard to Roth catch-up contributions, et cetera, a Roth would make a good idea. But I'll just reiterate that when you adopt the Hoosier Start Plan, again, you're going under the umbrella of the state of Indiana's comptroller's office, who does all of the administration and all of the fiduciary duties, because there's several parties involved in the Hoosier Start Plan from the state level. One of those is, of course, the legal department, and then the other is what's called Cap Cities, who does all of the investment management, if you will. They make sure that the funds that are in Hoosier Start are the best, the best in that asset class, and they review those on a regular basis. And that, again, relieves the burden from anyone else of having to qualify, why are these plans, why are these investments in this plan the best for us, right? And we have to be able to justify that, so. So yeah, so we'd like to add the plan, add a Roth, be able to let people do rollovers. Rollovers right now for us sometimes are a problem, because we either don't have the proper solution for them, or we don't have a Roth option for them available. So again, there is no cost at all to the city of Ellisville to adopt Hoosier Start. It's simply trying to say to the employees, look, we've got a really good option out here. You could stay in this plan that you have if you want, there's nothing inherently wrong with it, but the Hoosier Start Plan would kind of jump us into the, into the today and now of regulation and all of that. And then I would highlight to you that my role with Hoosier Start, as I said earlier, is really to, to do educational support and engagement of employees. So I go around on a regular basis to government entities and meet with their employees on one-on-one and group settings, and again, try to educate and consult and walk people through, helping them with their retirement, because a lot of people right now do not have support within their, within their retirement accounts. I mean, I've got Fidelity myself, my retirement, and I have no support from them, and I can't, I can't call someone like, your participants can call us here, local. So that's really all I have. I think it's just something to bring to the table, to say to the employees, you're important, we want to retain you, here's a good tool to do that, and in turn, we're going to educate them and engage them. And really, we'd like to try to, if you were to adopt it, we would really ask in return your cooperation in promoting the plan and understanding that it's important for the employees. And, you know, when we read the news and we can see, you know, possible social security cuts in the future, all of this, it's just making this stuff more and more and more important as time goes forward. So that being said, I thank you all for letting me come and give you a 30-minute presentation in five, so thank you. Yes, sir.
When you mentioned the fees, I also, I see there's managed account service fees. Is that in addition to the record-keeping fee and administrative fee?
Yes, it is. So there's three ways that people within Hoosier Start can invest their money. And they do it as a, help me do it, do it for me, or something else. So generally, the default investment for most people, like for state employees that are auto-enrolled, are what are called target date funds. Those are just fund-to-funds that have a, have a corresponding age 65 retirement to them, and they get more conservative as time moves forward.
Right.
Your, your current, your current funds that are the target-based funds right now have an expense ratio of .49%. Our target date funds are 0.07. But again, I'm telling you about the other Nationwide plan. Remember, I'm a Nationwide guy here, so.
Got it.
So three ways, the target date, target date funds are one of those. The other is individual mutual funds, whether they want to pick the Vanguard or Fidelities or whatever over the world, they could have as many funds as they want and change them as much as they want, it just has to equal 100%. Now, there's a third option that's completely, option for the participants, that is if they want a professionally managed account, if they want to turn over their investment management to a third party. The state uses Wilshire and Associates, and it's called Pro Account. It's where a third party is going to manage a portfolio based on a client's profile, if you will, their age, time, horizon, risk, and all that stuff. And that is, if I'm not mistaken, .45% additional fee.
Yeah, it starts at .45.
And then that tiers down as it goes. I really only would promote Pro Account if somebody's really not wanting to have anything to do with their investment decision-making, or they were to roll over, you know, substantial amount of money, I'd say, you know, 50 to 100,000 or more, and then they want to have that spread out over many, many asset classes and so forth. So that's just a whole different option available within Hoosier Start. There's a lot of other bezels and whistles within Hoosier Start that are also out there that we're not really even, even going over, like, there's a Schwab self-directed brokerage option, there's retirement counselors that put together financial plans for participants for free, because we don't sell anything, right? So, so yes, that's if they wanted that third option.
Got you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Otherwise, it's $54 a year, 48 of that, I think, goes to the state and six goes to Nationwide, and then the cost of the funds, so.
Got you.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned several times about promoting this plan.
Yes.
Say our employees want to look into this, who would they approach? And how are we going to promote this and?
Well, we would ask that you would partner with us, with the, with the state resources and so forth. We have what we call PEP, or Participant Engagement Programs, where we email, we mail, and we do webinars and all of this kind of stuff. But we ask that you, you all would be supportive of the plan and promote them. Am I doing something wrong?
I apologize for that, Mike.
Stand back a little bit, it's kind of hot.
Okay. Just, so we would just ask that you help us to promote it, because unless, unless we have buy-in from the sponsor, you know, we're spinning our wheels out there, so we really need the sponsor to, to say to the employees, look, we, we, we promote this to you, we think this is a good idea, this is a great, in addition to what you already have, sort of thing. So if you think about, what is the employee actually funding through their own payroll for their own retirement? Well, really, they're not, right? PERF is never going to get them where they need to be, PERF is an after-tax 3% contribution that grows taxable. So it's a very unattractive option there, and they don't fund the pension, so they're really, if they have these Nationwide products. But to your point, when I say the buy-in, and I mean that in the most sincere way, is our job really is to try to, to be the best partner we can to you and to, and to really be, be a team member with you in promoting this. So, you know, I like to go out to, you know, company picnics and so forth, and, and, and events that I do with, whether it be state employees or the city of Bloomington or wherever it may be, where we're out there, you know, promoting the importance of retirement savings. And that's really what it's all about at the end of the day.
I will mention that last year, we were able to have Nationwide and several of our vendors come out. We're planning on in April having Empress, which includes PERF and the 77 Fund and Nationwide, and if the council so adopts these, to have a representative to speak. And then again, before open enrollment, because retirement is very important, and I think a lot of our staff is underutilizing our resources.
When is it open?
October?
It may be in October this year, that's the hope, but we could push into November since we're going to have to go to open market this year.
All right. All right, any other council questions?
I did have one question for Darla. I probably should have checked with you before. Should they, if they decide to approve, approve in two separate resolutions? Okay, that was my other. Okay, okay.
One of them, is one of them the matching plan?
Right, one of them is the deferred compensation plan resolution, one's the deferred compensation matching plan. So it's two resolutions for two different plans.
May I just address that, please, real quick? Generally, when we open a 457 plan, if it's going to be employee contributions only, then it's just simply the 457 plan. If it's going to be a plan where we want to add an employer match, which I will be honest with you, when you do add a match, that drives participation straight up. We've done this in other towns, and the participation rates went from 5 to 95 almost overnight. It gives people that additional incentive. But when we start looking at adding employer contributions, generally the way we prefer to do that is to add what we call a 401A to the plan. So it'd be a 457 and a 401A side-by-side under one account number, one account. But employee contributions would go into the 457, and employer contributions would go into the 401A. There's no, there's no vesting on it unless you insisted on that, but generally, generally they split those, and the reason they generally split those is for IRS codes, but technically a participant could max out a 457 and still get a, a match from their employer, even if they've maxed out their, their portion of that. So lastly, in that regard, I will also say that whatever, whatever issues you may have with enrolling others in PERF or other plans, or you might want to do something on employee or, or employee contributions paid by the employer, Nationwide is the country's largest 457 deferred comp provider. We have the resources and, and, and the team behind us that could literally get just about anything you could imagine done and done quickly and efficiently. So again, thank you.
And the same nationwide on your side, right?
Exactly.
See, marketing pays.
Marketing, baby, yeah.
All right, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Darla, you've had time to look this over, I guess, everything. You mentioned this, this has to be done in two resolutions?
Can I apologize for not putting that one there? I just realized that last minute. If the council so decides, those would be the resolutions.
Okay, so Darla, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I don't.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Seeing none?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, go ahead.
My former employee offered this, I'm not sure what it was called in 1981, but I joined in 81, and it's a similar, similar verbiage back then, and it, they came through with everything with that. And you have problems, you call them and they're right back to you. So again, I had a lot of good luck with it, I know a lot of the people are the same, same way, so just.
I guess I've got a.
Just a general question, on the employer match, who, when is that amount determined and who is that determined by?
You will have to determine that, so once, once you pass the resolution, that you've gone through the application, there's some additional information that the council will have to decide, because they've got eligible classes of employees, whether there's a waiting period, no waiting period, what kind of match you want to make, percentage, flat dollar. So once you pass the resolution, you will have to go through the adoption agreement and decide how you want to handle it.
Is there a deadline for that?
I wouldn't think so. You mean, if you wanted to pass the resolution tonight and circle back around to you, I would think that would be okay, but.
Yes, that's what the intent was, was to start the process, because with the 457, we would be able to start that one immediately, but we would have to address the personnel policy with Darla.
Right.
To change that verbiage once the council had made the decision on what classes and percentage and where the matching would come into play for what employees.
Sure.
So right now, employees required to match into PERF, correct? Or I mean, the town, we have a requirement of a certain amount we have to map, put into PERF for each employee?
In 77 Fund, correct.
Okay, so if this is passed, does this replace the PERF, or would we also be contributing to another plan on top of the PERF?
No, so my understanding of it is the 457 plan would be as currently Nationwide is right now, so we offer that to our employees. So the town pays the entire percentage for PERF and 77 Fund, and then a voluntary contribution through Nationwide or Hoosier Start, should the council choose to adopt this. The 401A plan, if we were to adopt it now, would just start the process, so then the council could continue the conversations, because in the event that we decided, let's say somebody retired from PERF or the 77 Fund, and we would like to hire them again at a full-time position, I don't have anywhere to put them for retirement, because as our current policy states right now, they either have to go into PERF or 77 Fund. So this gives us more of a recruiting option for employees that maybe come to us later and they end up wanting to retire, but still being able to have a full-time position, because PERF and the 77 Fund allows an employee to retire from either of those funds and still have full-time employment somewhere else, or at the same municipality, just not in those funds.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we won't have a situation where somebody, we're paying for their PERF and paying a portion of the 457?
No, sir.
It's going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just to create more opportunities for the town to hire and retain employees.
A stacking situation where we're contributing 6% or 7%, which is a heck of a good return right off the top if you can get it.
So is it a good idea to maybe think about doing this in steps? Where we maybe offer it as a 457, and then talk about matching during budget time? And, and then move on from there, as opposed to trying to?
Well, if we've already budgeted for employees to be matched to PERF, I don't know why we wouldn't put the same percentage of this.
Well, because it's new money. We, we still are going to have to pay the PERF, right?
Well, let's just say, for example, we had somebody that, that left, and we hired somebody that had retired from PERF. And we would like to hire them, but we can't, because they've retired from PERF, so we can't put them in PERF, but we'd like to hire them, so if we had the 401A plan, the council could decide on a percentage to put in retirement for them, and then that would allow us to hire them, because as our policy states now, in order to be full-time, we offer retirement benefits.
But shouldn't we deliberate about how much?
Oh yeah, absolutely. We're just starting the adoption process for the matching. We would have to amend the personnel policy, that would have to be a step, and then the council would have to decide if that was appropriate, and they would have to decide what percentage to put in there and what class of tiers.
But, so if you had, if you start with a 457, which is in employee contribution only, can you not convert to the 401A or whatever you call it later?
Patrick, we can adopt in separate steps, can we not?
Yes.
Okay, so yes.
So just to be clear, I'm, I'm for promoting savings for our employees, and it's really important. When you get a little older, someday I think I'll have to worry about retiring. Other people I know might too, but anyway, so, but, 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 but I think if we're going to talk about contribution, it should be in a process.
But I guess where I'm really missing it is that, where nobody's going to be doubling and having a contribution to this and PERF. So if it's either or, then why wouldn't it just be the same? If you get PERF, we match this, if you get this, we match the same amount. I mean, do you guys see what I'm saying?
So.
Why make it a different amount?
They don't, doesn't employees have to be part of PERF?
Well, if we were to hire an employee that retired from PERF, PERF and 77 Fund do not put any stipulations like social security does, they can have as many jobs and make as money, as much money as they want, but once they retire from those funds, they are no longer eligible to go back in those funds.
Right, but that's an exception, not the rule. I mean, we're talking about, overall, if we're going to adopt this, all the employees could participate.
So that's my question, as a brand-new, a brand-new employee starts next Monday, right? If we go into Hoosier Start, are we paying, or sorry, they will be contributing into Hoosier Start, but also the PERF thing is still happening?
Only if we go two steps, if we only go to the 457 now, then that would be an option and maybe help with recruitment.
Right.
And then by, say, June, we'll have vetted this, figure it out if we want to contribute, and it'll be part of our, because it'll be increased amount of money that we would be putting towards.
But I'm getting two different signals here, I'm getting one person saying that we, they're not doubling up, we wouldn't be doubling up, and then you're saying that they, I, I'm, so.
I'm saying if a new employee starts, they have to be part of PERF. I'm saying if a new employee starts, they have to be part of perf.
Right.
Correct?
According to our policy, they can only go in one of two buckets as a full-time employee currently. They can go into perf or they can go into seventy-seven fund.
Right.
But the seventy-seven fund is just for firefighters and police.
Okay.
So.
So you'd be doing a double match then, in my opinion?
Pardon?
You'd be doing a double match because we're doing the perf match.
But Noel, you're saying, no, they would not be. Because a new employee started off and they qualify for perf.
Let's be clear.
Yeah.
Question was asked, a question was answered, but not the same one.
I've got two different answers.
If a new employee starts, a civil employee starts, they have to go into perf.
Correct.
Right. Okay, yeah, that, that's a rough, but so if we do a matching for the 457 plan and that employee is already, they have to go into perf and then we're also going to match for them on a 457 plan?
No.
See, that's what I'm saying.
The 457 plan is completely one hundred percent voluntary.
Okay, but you guys were not talking about a 457. You were talking about the 401A or whatever.
The 401A.
So that's why I said maybe we want to go in steps because if, if we do a 457, then we only have to match the perf. If we go into a 401A, then you would be, you, you'll do an ordinance or a resolution, whatever. And then you'll be tied to matching perf and the 401A.
So they can.
Well, that's only if we change the policy. It's only, so in the current personnel policy, it states that the town pays retirements. And I do not have it quoted. But the retirement benefits for a full-time employee include empress, perf, or the seventy-seven fund. This is just another option that we would have to work out with Darla, the exact language to put in there. If we hired somebody that maybe, a good example, retired.
That's not what we're talking about. You're mixing it up.
The 401A match, yes. That's, that's, you have to have that 401A match. It's, it's a little deceptive in its language. It's called a match because that's what the employer can put money into.
Can or should, have to?
Doesn't have to. It's whatever our policy states that the town is going to do.
Okay, I'd make some more clearer.
I'm sorry. No, sir.
Okay, I'm clear now.
Sorry, I could have explained that better.
I thought 457 was one step lower than a 401A.
No.
All right, guys, instead of back and forth here, I think the council and I would probably be okay with Resolution eleven today. And then from Resolution twelve, doing a work session and looking into this a little bit deeper. Because it sounds like there's a lot of questions that need answered and go from there.
Because we don't want to approve an ordinance that's going to put us on the hook for double.
Right.
Okay, but I would like to say I'm. I'm for anything that helps employees prepare themselves. And, and the one thing the gentleman said more important than anything is a lot of our employees don't stay ten years and become vested. So that, that really helps for them. So I, I'm for it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and I think you made up some good points. Everyone has, and I think this is a good compromise. If we want to go through with Resolution eleven today and schedule a work session or what else we need for Resolution twelve and the steps needed after that, we can go from there. All right, anyone else have a question, comment before we move on? All right, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution eleven.
Make a motion to approve Resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-five to approve the Hoosier Start adoption plan.
I'll second.
Just one other question. Darla, this is fine, we do it this way, correct?
I think it's fine. And I didn't see what Noel gave you, but Resolution eleven is for the 457, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-five.
Is the other one, yes, okay.
Yeah, it's the 401, yeah. All right, motion and second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seen none, roll call?
Pamela Samuels?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Trevor Saker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and since Resolution twelve wasn't even on the agenda, do we still need to table that or?
I would table it because as I understood it, she's got resolutions.
Yeah.
Four fifty-seven and matching plan. So I took, I took that to be one is one plan and one was the other. So I would table Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five.
All right, I'll, I move to table Resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five, the Hoosier Start 401A matching plan.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. No ordinance on first or second reading, no old business, no new business. Privilege of the floor. Anyone in the audience that has any business that was not covered on the agenda? If you would like, come up to the mic, sign your name.
Sign the name right here?
Yeah, there's a sheet up there, isn't there?
Yes, sir.
Name is Jim Perry and I'm, I think Denise knows why I'm here. Let, let me go back a little bit of the history. I appeared before this council in fall of twenty twenty-three. The council took some action, I think it was either in November or early December twenty twenty-four, finally, to move sidewalks along. Because of other complications, that was put off until March. Now, we're looking, today's the, what date in March? Twenty-fourth? March is almost gone. We still have no sidewalk. Although the council took some action. Now fundamentally, I think there's a problem with code enforcement and development oversight. And we're not doing a particularly good job because I should have been here five years ago when that sidewalk wasn't finished. But I wasn't. But I was here in December twenty, or December twenty twenty-three. I was back again and now I'm here again tonight. And I'd like some action taken and some indication that both code, code enforcement and development oversight will be more meaningful going forward. I will also raise another issue, and that is that at the same time I raised this issue in a fall of twenty twenty-three, I also raised an issue about speed limit or speeds on Abigail Lane, which were excessive and well beyond the twenty mile an hour posted limit. Nothing's happened. Although we did have a, apparently a radar device that was sent to Illinois for repair, is my understanding. But I don't know what's happened with that. But so this is not only one issue, it's multiple issues. And I, as a citizen, of course, I'm a little bit annoyed that we've, we did a lot of non, or work that should have been done by staff earlier on the Nationwide Retirement Plan. But when I sometimes step forward as a citizen, I'm told, remember, you only have three minutes. We need to do better respecting the roles of our citizens and what they bring to this council. And I, and I will enforce that by my presence in the future. What's the word on the sidewalks?
Do you want me to answer it?
If you feel you want to, yeah, go ahead.
So then how for, after I explained to her, I went to the town council and requested permission to draw on the bond if I had to. That was incentive for her. So she called me last week to let me know she had hired a concrete company to come in and put the sidewalk, but she didn't have a start date yet from then. So it's just all about that bond money, so.
What can we do? Because I mean, from the point of view of switching sides, this gentleman's been dealing with this for five years. We've known about it since twenty twenty-three and it's still not done. I mean, and now we're telling them, just, just give it a little bit more time. I mean, quite honestly, he's been pretty patient about this. This should have been done a long time ago.
Could I also make another point? And that is that we've invested a lot in the Ellisville Redevelopment Commission. And I know Councilor Ellis, you're a member of that commission. We're investing a lot in that, in that effort that fulfills the needs of a relatively small part of the community. But we have sixty-six hundred people who are not affected by those actions. For the most part, that's a small piece of the downtown commercial district and an area that's not been developed yet, is my understanding.
That's correct, but it's not costing the town any money.
But no, but we're not tending to the other business of the town, which involves the sixty-six hundred people who are residents of this community. And we're not enforcing the codes. Code enforcement requires a much more proactive stance than we've taken. And we, we have evidence to that effect. We ought to be doing our homework on this.
Yep, Denise, do you have something else to add on this?
Well, I was going to answer William's question about twenty twenty-four. So town resources, staff were extremely busy with the trail. And so I talked to Mr. Perry in December, explained I was waiting till this March, when the weather would be better, and it was the intent to do so. And then now the developer has said she will do it. She told me she's going to get it in because she wants that bond money released. So she told me she would let me know when next week, I think it was. Or maybe it's later this week. I think she called last week, so I should know this week when she will have that put in.
The sidewalk should have been in three to five years ago.
Right.
Because all the other homeowners got their sidewalks in with a few exceptions. And those people who were not compliant have put their sidewalks in.
You know, I understand your frustration and it's, you know, it's well deserved. But it sounds like we're trying to move on right now. And if we can get an answer, could you call Mr. Perry and let him know as soon as you find something out?
Sure.
And keep him in the loop and hopefully we can get this fixed in the next couple of weeks for you.
And I would also suggest. Associated with this property for more than a decade.
Right, I, I would also suggest maybe you come to the next meeting if you haven't heard anything and we'll readdress it until it gets fixed.
I, I patiently waited till the last meeting in March because I was told March. But I see nothing happening.
Well, it sounds like something.
There, there are a lot of other issues that, code enforcement issues that I could raise before this council that are problematic, that we need to attend to. And we are not attending to those.
Well, I think that they are attending to some of the issues. But if it's some things that you're aware of that maybe she's not aware of or the code enforcement officer's not aware of, then I would suggest you meet with Denise after the meeting and we could go through it. Instead of sitting up here and, and going through all of it right now, I think this back and forth just doesn't work. So hopefully, we can get a solution to this and get the sidewalks moving. And I will add something to the speed. We're having trouble all over town with speeds. And I think Jimmy has been working on this diligently. And it's, it's something that I've heard from many residents that the cars are speeding in front of their house. I know Jimmy has sent officers out to several times, places that I've told him about. And they see the officer there, of course, they're going to slow down. But as soon as that officer's gone, it's going to happen again. And there's just, not a whole lot can be done about it.
We've had some other people raise alternatives. One is the speed bumps, and I'm not a fan of speed bumps.
Yeah, speed bumps.
Although in the neighborhood adjoining ours, we have speed bumps.
And I think.
And there are no thoroughfares there. We've also had suggestions regarding four-way stop at the top of the hill, top of Abigail. That would, that could effectively prevent cars from running rapidly through Ruby Creek one and two, through Abigail and through the Overbrook Estates and sort of calm the traffic significantly. So there are solutions and those solutions have been brought before this group, before the town manager and others, but nothing's happened.
Kip? What's the, what's the process for looking at a stop sign like he talked about there?
Well, if you look at the, the state mandated, the MUTCD, the Manual Uniform of Traffic Devices, it specifically says in there that stop signs are not designed for speed control. They are not designed for that. So I've never tried to set up an intersection to, to design it by a stop sign being used as a speeding, you know, curve of speeding. That's not what it's designed for in the MUTCD. And the MUTCD is mandated by federal government and then also by state level as well. And most generally, state meets or exceeds the federal.
Right.
So.
Somebody had the right idea of moving or opening the Abigail Corridor from forty-six all the way to McNeely Lane with speeds of thirty miles an hour in a, in an area that's not tolerably thirty to twenty to twenty through the next area. Had that not been open, we wouldn't be talking about this today. Somebody had that bright idea, I don't know who, but when I moved in, it was not open.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Lakeview Drive was initially a county road. And county, all county roads are pretty well mandated thirty mile an hour. So when we took in segments of Lakeview, not all of Lakeview Drive today is town road. There's still segments of Lakeview Drive that is county mandated, county maintained sections of road on Lakeview Drive. He's correct, it does come in to Ellisville, reduce speed limit twenty mile an hour. But there is, it is not a straight-through shot, as you all well are aware. Lakeview Drive turns into Daisy. Daisy intersects with Clover Drive. And that's a, that's a, that's a three-way stop now, I believe. And then you got to turn right onto Abigail. So it's not a straight-through all the way through.
And, you know, I will say that too, Mr. Perry. I don't think it was our intention to open this up. I mean, it was developers and this was done and plans way before you probably moved into your area. So.
Many of the people moved into that area without knowing that in advance. But the question is whether it's, it's a prudent course of action given the property values and the speeds and the fact that there are now probably about seventeen kids in a very close proximity to that road. And the parents are afraid because they're, they're going to, they're going to prevent their kids from enjoying the neighborhood, in part because the speeds are going through, the cars are going through the area at forty or more miles an hour.
Kip, do we still have?
Folks who travel with canes across the road also sometimes, and walking the dog have problems too.
Do we still have the, the road surveys where we?
They're outdated now. The software that I did have for them are not working with the new windows that we got now. So I need to upgrade that or get newer counters is what I need to be able to do that. And I don't have that at this time. Also, the, the residents in both areas, in Meadowlands and in the subdivision that he's talking about, at the end of Nicholas for many, 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 many years. Overbrook, thank you. There was a stub out there and there was a stub out at the end of Clover Drive. So everyone that's lived in them associated areas all should have realized that that would connect eventually.
Right, whenever there's a stub or something, as development.
I don't even know what a stub is.
That just means it's a dead-end street that would go into the woods or a field or whatever. And, and that's gone all, all over our town and it's everywhere. I mean, if there's a stub there, you can guarantee eventually there's going to be a thorough, thorough way through there. So, I mean, I, I understand your frustration, but.
But at the same time, we're investing a lot in the redevelopment, Ellisville Redevelopment Commission. And simultaneously, we have a much larger part of the community that's not getting the attention it needs. And what I'm arguing for here or suggesting is that we use some good human judgment and actually talk to the citizens. And the citizens are being ignored.
Well, I don't know if they're being ignored. Obviously, we're sitting here listening to you. And if they would come up and speak like you're speaking, then. And if they would come up and speak like you're speaking, then, you know, we can hear them, or if they're sending letters to us or whatever.
We have very simple ways of doing surveys of citizens in this community. We could get that information very easily at a low, relatively low cost. So if we're really interested in that, because I recall the discussion a couple of weeks ago about talking about an audit. Now, I have an identical twin brother who was a city manager for thirty-seven years. His community, every year for thirty years, surveyed their citizens. And then they had conversations with the citizens, face to face.
Yeah, and we've done that.
About how well they were doing, but it's not happening here.
Yeah, but we just did that last year. Was it last year or the year before?
Two or three years ago.
Yep. And that's what these posters and things are around the room.
You mean in vision Ellisville?
That's part of it.
In vision, yes, we did surveys. There was questionnaires sent out to everyone.
Yeah, I never got it. I was involved after the fact, but I was, I never got a questionnaire.
They cast a pretty wide net with that. And I'm also regularly on the Facebook group that's tied just to Ellisville, Ellisville High Neighbor. They have a, I mean, if there's a problem there, I have people all the time, like today. I think Mike and Kip were there, there was a drain stuck. We were able to, I was able to let them know about it right away. And as soon as somebody alerted me, if somebody emails me or messages me, I, you know, I'm not going to tell you, everybody to have to come up here. Reach out to us though, because we don't know what we don't know. And even if we said tomorrow or two weeks from now, we're promoting this big thing at the library for everybody to come, I bet we would have five or six people there, tops, from the public. But if we go to someplace like Facebook, if we go to someplace where the people already are, like next door, they're already talking about this stuff, so we can get ahead of it, and that's.
I'd be happy to share with you some recommendations about generating more public input. But it's discouraging to come to this meeting and then to spend the first thirty minutes on what I consider to be staff work, that is, the retirement program. Now, maybe you have to take some action as a council, and I understand that. But at the same time, we all should have been better informed, or the staff and the people making decisions should have been better informed in advance of this meeting, and not leave the public comment to the end of the meeting. And I'm, thank you for giving me more than my regular three minutes.
Yeah, I would say I'm letting you speak, so I know you get frustrated, so.
But I, but I, I've been to many meetings over the last year and a half. And the gentleman from Nationwide got a lot more attention than I, than any citizen walking in the, into the room. And that's ass backwards. That's ass backwards. If you want public input, you need to modify the processes.
I'm gonna have to ask you, your time's up now. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah. And Denise is gonna call me?
By the next meeting, can we get a firm date? And if they can't give one, tell them we'll do the work ourselves. I mean, honestly, at this point in time, it's gone on too long. They had five years to remedy this.
And Mr. Perry, she will call you and let you know as soon as she finds out. And like I said, you're more than welcome to come to the meetings and speak, so. Anyone else? Seen none? We will go down to supervisor's comment.
Yeah, I have a comment. Actually, I have a request. On behalf of the clerk's office, I sent y'all an email about benefit time for the deputy clerk. And I'm come to you to ask that we change the PTO for vacation from two weeks to three weeks. I can answer any questions if you haven't read the email, but basically, it's all laid out in the email.
So you're asking for permission now?
Yeah, I'm asking for permission now to change the PTO time from two weeks to three weeks, and it be retroactive for the year.
For the chief deputy, right?
Yes, she started when we were still going over the personnel policy. And so we use that as a recruitment tool to recruit her. And then after the policy was adopted, we realized that she wasn't grandfathered in.
So let me ask the question, the three weeks vacation time, so that's standard now to all employees, hired?
No, 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 if I may. So during the time that we were recruiting our deputy clerk, we were highly motivated to get them hired and in the seat. We had a new clerk, we need to get everybody trained, we want to get up and running, which a year or less than a year later, we are and feel real good about who we hired, by the way. And so we had started the process to change our personnel policy back in twenty-twenty-two. Everything doesn't happen overnight. And so we got to the point where we were sure that it would be enforced and in place by the first of twenty-twenty-four, which still did not happen. We were using a third-party vendor to help us. And I'm not going to go into detail what happened there, but anyway, so when we had the application and we had a chance to hire somebody, we took it. And we ended up hiring her before the policy was in place, which was a month later or something. So all I'm asking you to do is allow us to use the new verbiage in the new policy that says when we hire someone with experience or years of employment, and we feel like to recruit and retain people, that we can offer a lateral transfer of not only, well, of their benefit time up to what our limits are. And then, of course, we always, we do the same thing with the pay too. We have a range, a high and a low, and when appropriate, we go to the high.
So let me ask you, how long does it usually take an employee to work before they're, before they receive three weeks?
Five years.
Five years. So what is going to happen at the end of this five years?
They get three weeks. Is that right?
Well, she would go up to four weeks at the end of five years of employment.
Didn't she have time from Bloomington?
She had four weeks when she left Bloomington.
And if we used it for a recruitment tool?
I mean, if that's part of the sales pitch, right, we've kind of got to deliver that, in my opinion.
She already took one week.
Right, and, you know, I was surprised at this situation before too. And I'll restate what I'm saying. I just think this is going to cause a lot of frustration and a lot of employees being upset that their time, how do I say this? That they vested the five years, and now employees can come in off the street and receive more time. Now, if you did use it as a recruitment tool, but I was told back when this happened that it, that was not the situation. And so that's why I have a, kind of have a problem with this. And I, I just think you're going to start getting more employees coming to you, to all the supervisors, saying, well, okay, this person now makes three weeks. I worked at this job for that long too. I was hired in this year too. Do I get three weeks' pay?
That's not the situation we're talking about at all.
Well, I think it is, though.
Well, and I don't.
Well, so.
Because I think in this situation, she's carrying over from another municipality. That's what we're. I mean, how many other employees do we have in that situation?
I think we've had a few over the years.
A few? And, and not unlike, God, going back fifteen or eighteen years ago, I came to you with the same problem, and I said, listen, if we don't change the pay, and we're not allowed to offer them the high pay instead of having them come in and do a year's probation when we hire somebody that's been working for five, eight, fifteen years for another municipality or a like employment, and we want those people, we need tools so we can not only recruit them, but also retain them. And so this is not a wild request. It's part of our policy now. And this employee was caught in our, our motivation and hesitation because of our, what we had to go through to get this policy taken care of. Nobody in here was at fault. And so it is indeed a unique situation.
Well, and, you know, I do have an opinion on that too. I mean, if the policy was not in place at the time, it should have never been offered, so.
I think you missed the part where we were motivated to hire somebody. And we, we, we entered, we went through an interview process.
I understand.
And we realized we had a chance to hire somebody that would fit, and she's exemplary.
I'm not disagreeing any of that.
Well, so we, we went ahead, and we had to just, you know, the personnel policy was lagging behind us. And all I'm saying is, we would, I'm requesting that we allow the use of the new policy and give her the extra weeks' vacation. It's, it's, I mean, it won't make the world spin backwards.
Do you have something you want to say?
I just, I agree with Dan on one thing. It could, yes, cause an issue in the future. It's not like we're saying she don't deserve it. But I don't see the fairness in it because what if somebody comes in her thing and you guys don't decide that they should get, I mean, how many employees waited for their time? I'm afraid it's going to cause an issue.
The current policy states now that the supervisors with approval can do that. They can do that now.
Right, it does, but it didn't. That's what my point was.
It was a month behind. I mean, we were really close to approving it.
The policy wasn't in place.
It should have never been offered. No one had the authority to do that.
We had been working on for the personnel policy for over two years, and so.
I, I'm sorry, Noel, I mean, it just.
So you're looking at discretion, like when you hire someone, not everybody's going to get it.
Personnel policy never would have been approved. What would you have done then?
She probably would have left.
I think I disagree with Dan and Pam on this.
I think in order to get good talent, you've got to be able to bend a little bit. If that means an extra vacation to get somebody of this stature, I'm more than happy to approve it.
And you guys are missing the point with me. I don't disagree that at all, so.
It's just, is everybody going to get it, everybody that comes in now?
No, this is a unique situation. We have a new policy that states the same thing.
And they find out she got it, and it worked for five years, but you're telling them they have to work five years.
There's, there's nobody in the situation described in the email and explained to you. There's nobody else in that.
Yet.
That situation. Not yet, because the new policy allows for all of this.
If somebody came in right now in the exact same circumstances, they would give her the three weeks.
Absolutely. Well, I wouldn't even be asking you.
Right. So, I mean, that's what it comes down to. Are we going to punish an employee because of our slowness on approving the policy? I get what you're saying about.
It's, it's not that we're punishing anybody or that.
Well, in a sense, if we don't approve it, in a sense, we are. Because we kind of told her in a gentleman's agreement or ladies' agreement, whatever you want to say. This policy is coming down the pike. Nobody's ever brought up an issue on this aspect of, of this. It's kind of a inside-baseball thing to fix. And, you know, she's carrying over time, in a sense, from her other employee that was similar to what we're doing. Very few people are going to come from like to like. Like if I came from, I'll just say, you know, for example, my store that closed, I ran my store for six years. I wouldn't have like experience in the town to give me more vacation time. So I'd have to start square one. So it wouldn't be.
We didn't ask for four weeks, but we thought it was appropriate to ask for three weeks and to offer three weeks. And we assumed, and it's our mistake, I guess, if you need somebody to be at fault here, it's Noel, Noel and my mistake that we offered her the three weeks. But in fact, we thought the personnel policy would sail through and at the last minute, when we get back the final, the final personnel policy, they had it written backwards. And so we had to go through it like two more times after that. So this is a unique situation. This is not going to cause an avalanche of requests for more vacation because we have not hired anybody and offered them extra time or allowable time. I mean, there, I mean, we're not, our doors are not going to get beat down tomorrow saying everybody wants it. Most of our employees have three weeks' vacation. Because we recruit and retain our help, and it's because of how we treat them.
Well, I just think, okay, my opinion, I'm fine with her having. That's not the issue at all. Because I know she's got a lot of experience. But my issue is maybe in the future, maybe we shouldn't put the cart before the horse. Because like you said, you offered thinking that they, it would be done when you offered it to her, and then it ended up not being done. So maybe we should be careful when we hire people to make sure, before we put an offer out there, that that's where it's going to be.
I agree, and we made a mistake, and we're trying to right the wrong. And we were definitely highly motivated to get that position filled because we had a new clerk, and we was working, you know, we wanted everything to just move on like nothing happened. Like, you know, we used to have a twenty-six-year clerk that breathed, being a clerk. We had somebody new that won, won the job through an election. And we were trying to support that effort and make sure it was as flawless as we could. And so we were very highly motivated to get this person in the, I mean, it could have been anybody. But this person come in, get them trained, and make the wheels run. And so you're right, we shouldn't have done what we did, and I, we made a mistake. But it was, you know, it was a mistake. I'm asking you if you can help me write, write this.
I don't have an issue with it at all. I just said for future reference, maybe we better not put the cart before the horse.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
You do agree with that, right?
I've got my hats in my hand when I come to you.
And that's kind of what I was saying, that if we made a mistake on offering it too early, I don't want the employee to pay the price for that mistake. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, everybody probably could claim victim of circumstances, but the buck starts, stops here.
Oh, no, if you promised it to her, no, I think we should give it to her. Because, you know, we can't just go promising to people and not keeping our promises, but I'm just said.
It's a future reference. Go easy.
I'll take a hit.
Anyone else? Comments?
Do you need a motion on this?
Yes.
Well, it's a comment.
After, after the motion's been made, I'll ask for a public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
I will gladly make, gladly, I guess, make a motion to approve the town manager's request regarding vacation time and making it retroactive.
And Uncle, how do we say?
All right. Any other council comments, questions? Any public comment?
Valerie DeWor. I know that your job is hard, and I know that once in a while, people may overstep what they're doing. But it's disappointing to see so much time slapping a hand instead of moving forward to fix what's been broken. And so I'm glad to see that you finally got to the vote. But in the future, hopefully, we can, you can work forward rather than spending so much time moving backward.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seen none, roll call.
Hamless Samuels?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
No.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Moving along? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just want to say, you know, right now, as we go through our meeting, we got a large crew out on a large main break. They're working overtime, get the water back on, and keep the trains on the tracks. The other day, we had an unfortunate accident where somebody lost their life. And immediately, we had police, fire, Department of Public Works on that terrible accident. And, um, that happens every day here. And, um, uh, we have, um, I don't know, twenty or thirty subdivisions. And every day, in one of those subdivisions, somebody speeds right down through the middle of them. We can't be there because we have X number of policemen. The last year, we talked about hiring two more policemen and three more firemen, and none of that happened because we don't have any money. So, um, uh, in a small town, we're always have less money than we need, which means we have less employees than we need. That includes planning and code enforcement, because right now, there's all kinds of code enforcement that needs to be taken care of, but everything can't be first, and everything can't happen overnight. And even when you order parts or hire people or do a personnel policy, sometimes it takes too damn long. I agree with that, but that's just the way it is. And so pe, people should be patient, appreciate the help they do get. And so I thank my employees.
Thank you. Jimmy?
I'm good, thank you.
Chris? Kep?
Uh, what, what is that? Oh, yeah.
No, this, I'm going to care to them drugs, but.
Oh, sure, you might as well spread the joy.
Kep, you don't want to do it, or?
Well, yeah, I do, because that's not what we've talked about, probably going to talk about, but, uh, we need to work on, uh, implementing a will tax.
The what? I'm sorry.
The will tax.
Will tax.
No, go ahead. Go, let them know what's going on.
So with, with, with House Bill fourteen sixty-one, I don't know if you all are aware of that, if the municipality does not have the will tax implemented, we no longer will be able to apply for the Community Crossings Grant. So with that being said, to give you guys an idea of what the Community Crossings Grant has done for the town of Elsville, we have since two thousand sixteen, uh, now, this is, this is including the Townsmatch along with what the awarded money is. We have been able to implement using two million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. So the, the amount awarded by the state was one million eight. And our contribution to that, two million, was only six hundred and forty-six thousand. I've been able to resurface, uh, upgrade stormwater, uh, infrastructure with this money that we would never have been able to do. I am a taxpayer as well in Monroe County. I am just like the rest of you. I don't want to see my taxes go up, but the citizens of Elsville deserves to keep this service going on. And therefore, we need to discuss of implementing this will tax. And if we don't have this done, is it, am I right by saying June thirtieth of this year? Then twenty twenty-six, I will not be able to apply for a grant.
And, and this is a heads up tonight. We're not, we're not going to try to work it out tonight.
I just want to put that thought in your all's head.
You guys, what is the minimum we would have to do for a will tax? I know excise goes with that. Because I think it's no secret, when Baker and Tilly was here, I thought they said sixty-five dollars, and that's a non-starter for people. But then I'm hearing, that's not the case. What is the case? I cannot get a clear answer. What's the minimum for both?
We'll, we'll come back with options.
Yes, we'll come back with options on that.
We, we don't intend to make the decision, but we wanted you to have the heads up, so.
Well, in, in those options, I definitely want to know the bare minimum.
Okay, bare minimum and, and maximum, and we'll just give you the gambit of, um, choices you can ma, make. And I totally don't want to make the suggestion, we're going to let you make that suggestion, but we, if we want to go ahead with the Community Crossings Grant, then we have some deadlines we need to hit, and we thought we'd give you a heads up tonight about them.
And then if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, so that the, the taxpayers of the town limits of Elsville, I'm under the understanding that if we do implement this, you won't be double taxed, you won't be, your will tax, when I go to the county, it will come to Elsville.
We'll have all that, we'll have all that information for you.
So, so.
Yeah, so that was my question. It's like, I've been paying will tax.
Exactly.
You know.
But we will have that information, like, like Mike said, we'll have that information to you, so.
And for the public, well, I'm very supportive of a will tax, depending on the amount. But one of the biggest reasons I'm supportive of it, property taxes take three or four years to really trickle into the community. And then we cannot even get the full amount of growth that's happened. But the wheel taxes, as soon as someone registers their vehicle here, it's a, I mean, pretty much the next quarter, we're getting the money. And it is the fastest way to turn around growth. And actually, well, the biggest complaint, one of the biggest complaints I hear, we don't want to pay for new growth. Well, this is a way for existing residents not to have to pay for new growth, because we're already in the MVH line short. So existing residents will be paying for the current growth of what they, just maintaining what they have. And as new people come in, they'll be paying for their new stuff, the wheel tax.
And with this money, it would, it would implement my MVH funds. Some of that money in there, I could redirect in other places that I can't use the will tax at to be able to help the community and other avenues of the town, so. Uh, one last thing that I've got before I pass on, just want to give you the heads up, too. Uh, I was short on trying to get this resolution to, uh, Noel on time, but I'll be coming to you at the next council meeting. We got a two thousand fourteen international tandem truck that I'm going to be looking about, uh, surplus. And so just want to let you guys know about that. It'll probably be on the next agenda.
Um, Kep, I would also ask that you look into, and I, you probably already are, but you mentioned tonight, the software not working for the.
Yes, I'm working on that.
Because don't we have to put numbers together for somebody every year for that?
We used to have to have that for the Community Crossings Grant, the, the, uh, traffic council, but we don't have to have that any longer.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I, I do want to, I do want to get that equipment back up and going again. And, and the, those were the, the tube-type counters that went across the road. It's about like going from an old cell phone to the new cell phones. And, and now I can, there's the, uh, the, uh, the, the technology's a lot in there now, and I can use, use radar detection to be able to get my traffic count and speed and all that, so, yes, I, I am looking into that.
Let us know the cost of that. I mean, that, that's, that's infrastructure worth investing in.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll bring this up again, and, and I've brought this up to you many, many times. But I, it is my understanding, I was talking to someone down in, um, down in New Orleans County. I don't know if that's a county, what county that is, actually, but the town of New Orleans is Orange County.
Orange, mhm.
Um, they have something there that I've mentioned before. It's a slowdown. It, it's a digital sign, but it also does all that traffic count and all that information. It does a gambit of things.
Yeah, I've seen that as well.
And, um, I think it is a great tool. It gets me to slow down, and you can see people coming in. It's flashing red. And if you get to the speed limit, which I think is thirty, thirty-five, whatever, it'll turn green to you and say, thank you. Um, I really, really think we should look into a few of those.
I think they got one of them as you're going into Worthington. I think it does the exact same thing going into Worthington as well, so.
I seen these years ago, and I brought that to your, to attention, and I know the council wasn't against it, it, or was against it. You weren't, so, um, I would love to see that happen again.
Yeah, I'll investigate that as well, and then find out from NDOT, because we have to graciously permit that from NDOT, get that put along the highway.
And that's what they said, too, but they said that the NDOT is pushing these signs, so.
Okay, well, good. Yeah, I'll look into that more.
Yep.
Dan? I always thought they were for setting the high score, so.
Well, sometimes you will use that to see how fast they can go, and I'm sure you can probably attest to that. So that's one drawback to it, so.
If you, if you get the high score, flashing lights come behind you, and they give you a.
Dan, um, so today's department head meeting, we scheduled a meeting about speeding in the town for next Monday. And, uh, and we'll all be there, so.
Okay.
So we, we, we were ahead of the speeding concern.
Is that it, Kep?
That's all we got.
All right, Denise?
I don't have anything.
Noel? All right, uh, bring it back to council for comments. Seeing none. Meeting adjourned.